K R F A ninety-one point seven Moscow Pullman, K N W V ninety point five.
We are on the air. All right, welcome to the Wednesday, June twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen, meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission. Need to announce that Item Six, the public hearing on Harvest Hills preliminary plat and rezone, has been pulled from the agenda tonight and is rescheduled for July twenty-two. Which is all unfortunate because I got a haircut. Anyway, next up, approval of the minutes. Actually, the mic seems kind of loud. Does it seem loud elsewhere? I'm just hearing myself. Okay, thank you. Next up, approval of the minutes of June ten, two thousand and fifteen.
I'll move to approve. I didn't see any issues.
Thank you, Rob. Is there a second?
Oh, a second.
Second, Deb. Okay. Any observations, corrections, clarifications that we need to make? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of approving the minutes of June ten. Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed and abstentions. Rebecca and Gregory. Okay, thank you. Next up, correspondence. Anything from staff?
None from staff tonight.
Commissioners, anything you'd like to share? Just an update on our shared readings. I've opened a conversation with Mike and Bill around the reasons statement that we fill out at the end of doing a land use action and those criteria, the reason, statement of reasons and crit-- no, I've got it wrong.
Reason statement of relevant criteria and standards.
There you go. Reason statement of relevant criteria and standards. And we asked staff to write it, but there are some criteria that we are presumably thinking about and using in our decision-making. And those are a little uneven in the zoning code. And so what I thought is, maybe we could take a s-- they're going to ultimately get addressed. Maybe we could take kind of a slow run at it and do some background reading, if I can find some, and take a little time and talk about it and think about what they are and what they mean in the process.
Splendid idea, yeah. Really, really good. Those of you who don't have the history, don't realize the agony we used to go through. And so write that, because try and write it quickly in front of whoever's here. And I'm not convinced, I think we could write them so that they're slightly more meaningful and understanding to the public, not to mention ourselves. That's a good idea.
Okay, so that's the topic that we're working on. If you have any shared readings related to that, please call them to my attention. Transportation Commission meeting report. Do you know of anything, Mike?
I do not, no.
Okay. Open microphone. This is a time when members of the public may speak to the commission regarding matters not on our agenda or currently pending before the Planning and Zoning Commission. And our faithful audience member, Victoria, is not stepping forward to the microphone.
Hard to say.
Anyway, so this is again the prod that come on downtown and share what you're thinking about in planning and zoning kinds of issues. Again, we are now at number six in the agenda, the public hearing for Harvest Hills preliminary plat and rezone. This has been pulled from the agenda tonight and has been rescheduled for July twenty-two. Next up, Mike, ground floor residential uses in central business draft ordinance.
Thank you. Well, I just figured we'd just pick up where we left off last time to go back through the presentation, just for the benefit of members that maybe weren't here last time. So we're talking about ground floor residential within the central business zoning district. And you may recall, last year, towards the end of the year, we had an amendment that allowed-- Can you pull that a little bit closer to you? Thank you. --residential uses within certain commercial zones. It was mainly neighborhood business, general business, and motor business. We ended up amending under permitted principal uses. We did allow residential uses, but had the requirement that they be located behind commercial uses in a manner that will not interrupt commercial frontage. And then we added some language at the end of that that said, "On primary street except as otherwise authorized herein." And then they may be allowed on the ground floor, on secondary street frontages, on corner lots, to account for that. And added a conditional use permit allowance within those zones to go through that process, through a public hearing, through the Board of Adjustment, in order to review residential uses, which were going to be located on the ground floor, and end up allowing those, the ones that were not behind commercial uses. And then industrial, we had at the time, one dwelling unit, which was allowed for a caretaker or watchman on premise. We just struck that and just allowed one dwelling unit per lot where it's accessory to permitted principal use because of the back-and-forth justification of what constituted a watchman or caretaker. So that amendment happened last year through the ordinance, and now we're, we were recently approached by owner of CJ's building in downtown Moscow, kind of in the north end of Main Street, within the central business district. He was interested in converting his entire building into a residential apartment development. When looking at that area, we noticed that you have several residential uses, kind of located on the edge of the district, on the periphery of central business, which aren't associated with the prime commercial corridor that's Main Street, and some of Third Street and Sixth Street, and some of those major streets within central business district. And then you also have the issue that, you know, maybe some existing buildings may not work with retail on the ground floor, or they weren't the original use of the building is why they were constructed, and they don't have the large window areas that, you know, allow for pedestrians, bicyclists, to look in and inside, outside of the building. You can't have the eyes-on-the-street type thing. And so, you know, maybe some of them just don't work for retail on the ground floor. We've also had that recent discussion in Legacy Crossing about the types of mixed use, and it's not always going to be vertical mixed use, where you have retail on the ground, office on the, you know, maybe middle, and residential above. You could have this mixed use, and it could, you know, be horizontal, where you have a residential building right next to an office building, right next to the typical, traditional vertical mixed use, and it would still contribute to the district and, you know, promote the walkability that we're looking for in the urban feel. We also have the requirement that central business requires residential above or behind commercial uses. So that already exists, we already allow residential, it just has to be above or behind commercial uses. So at the time, we kind of posed the question about whether or not the commission may be interested in looking at ground floor residential as a conditional use permit, like we had done within those other zoning districts. And so I'd gone through and mapped out kind of the areas or the properties that were residential, originally maybe developed as residential. Most of these are currently being used as residential, except for the, I just highlighted the CJ's building right there. But within these areas, you have residential, it's really located on the periphery. So Jackson Street here, numerous residential houses. You have an apartment complex here. We're right here in City Hall, and you have some of those historic homes directly across the street there to the north. I think as Nels indicated, the Hotel Del Norte, that, you know, this is a residential building here on the, on the corner, that's been used as residential for some time. There's a whole block on the west side of, you're on the east side of Jackson, that's currently being used as residential. I think they had torn down a couple of the buildings there, so it may be in some transition right now. But looking at the CJ's building, you know, it, since the original use wasn't some type of retail on the ground floor, I think it was always residential, it really isn't conducive to, you know, having retail be on the ground floor. You have that main entrance here, and then you immediately go up or downstairs. You kind of have these daylight windows here on the bottom for the basement level, and then all the windows that should have been on the first floor are really on the floor and a half, and they're a lot, you know, elevated, maybe a little more conducive to some type of residential development. This is the apartment, almost, you know, looks more generally town, townhomes across the street that wrap the intersection of First and Main there. And those are the homes on Jackson and Eighth Street, on that whole block. And then we have the issue of Tim Gressbeck's law office here, and so this had received a variance at one point in time in order to waive the, I guess, the commercial requirement on the ground floor. Probably was an illegal variance because it was more of a use variance, but you can see, it's just one of those areas, the ocularium's right next door, so it's in one of those transitional areas where it's, it's going from central business, commercial area, into the residential neighborhood, and it could really go back and forth. You know, you have these professional office uses that are usually in residential, you know, buildings that were originally constructed to be residential, and now they've subsequently been converted into commercial just because of the proximity towards downtown and the zoning of the area. Another shot of his office, and then you, this is the ocularium here, which is a similar circumstance. You could even maybe go one way or the other. I think all of these buildings here were at one time professional offices, and now they've subsequently been converted back into residential dwellings. And so, at the time, the commission was comfortable exploring some type of language. It was, you know, we were toying with primary activity centers, like we had talked about within Legacy Crossing, when we were looking at the window opening area amendment, or maybe some language about periphery of the district, just to be certain not to take up the, the prime commercial retail area, maybe on Main Street. You know, those are areas where we may, we might not want residential on the ground floor. And so I had done a draft ordinance and had this language included within it, saying residential uses, including residential rental unit located on the ground floor, which are not located behind commercial uses. Ground floor residential uses may not be located in the primary commercial activity centers of the central business zone. We had worked with this a little bit and had, in the last couple of days, come up with maybe a little bit different language I'd like to pose to you tonight, saying that residential uses located on the ground floor, which are not located behind commercial uses, with specific consideration given to preservation of primary retail frontages and/or suitability of buildings for ground floor commercial use. And so I think it, it combines, you know, a couple of things we're, we're looking for is just this, first, the suitability of the building, just like the CJ's example of, you know, maybe not, it wasn't originally built or intended to have any type of retail on the ground floor. So it allows the Board of Adjustment to, through going through the conditional use permit process, take a look at the composition of the building, and then, you know, gives other specific consideration to preservation of primary retail frontages. And so it would give them some, you know, discretion when they, when they look at a conditional use permit, but I think that, you know, obviously, staff could direct them towards the primary retail frontages would probably be between Second and maybe Sixth Street or Seventh Street on Main Street, and then certain portions of Third and Sixth Street. But I think that gives a little bit of flexibility there to guide the, the Board of Adjustment in, in really what we're looking for, what our intention is, and maybe allowing residential on the ground floor, so.
Mike, either of those number nines would be a conditional use, a statement about conditional use?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. So, not by right, but by conditional use?
By conditional use, yeah. It's similar to what we had done in, in those other zones, neighborhood business, motor business, and general business, so I would just be carrying that over.
Yeah, I think it's good to get rid of the word "primary" commercial, too, because I think it's a little tricky to be absolutely certain which is the primary, and it sort of insults a couple of people who are, there's always that issue of people on Main Street and people just off Main Street, are they second-class citizens or not? And so I like the word "primary" going away. I think it's a better, I think it's an improvement.
Mike, could you back up to the, to the map slide, I guess? Yeah, I had that same concern, Nels, that there's two properties there at the north end of the map that are on Main Street. And to say that's not primary, especially the one, Del Norte, is the fourth corner of a commercial pattern, right?
As a matter of fact, that in, in us, in many regards, that's where town started, just before the day the railroad came to town. They thought that was going to be the main corner, and that's why--
First.
That's why the, it was first, and that's why the big building is on the, the other corner. On the other hand, we need people living downtown. And the other side of the coin, certainly we don't want to have, to get rid of commercial, but we need people downtown who think going out to dinner at eight o'clock is a good deal, is something we would, we would adore that. So in the case, I think it's a really interesting argument, in the case of CJ's. Do you have pictures of, of the history of the, of what it was like fifty years ago?
I, I didn't look for those, no.
I just wonder what, Ian--
Well, this is kind of through the mid-sixties haze of my college days, but I believe that was the Hotel Idaho. It was a, there was a hotel down in that part of, what's that?
It got torn down.
It did get torn down, okay. Wasn't it near there?
Yeah, right next door.
Next door, okay. So, see, it was--
It is an unusual-shaped building, as you say. It doesn't look commercial, and, and so it would be really interesting to know. Boy, they could get an ARCA award if they could bring back something that's a little more exciting, too, because even if some of those windows were, if it becomes residential, it will have a certain kind of transparency that would be, it wouldn't make up for getting not having a commercial, but still, those blank windows are not as easy to enjoy.
There's a huge wall of light space.
I could, I think it'd be worth going down to, to look in the, I just wonder if the society has any images of what it used to be.
Well, Wendy was the one that seemed to think, or know, what the original use was, and--
Oh, uh-huh.
--I've seen some type of pictures on it, I think.
So Mike, could we go forward again to the language that you're proposing?
I like your, I like your change. I like that second definition a lot better. I think it offers a lot more clarity as to what, what the conditions would be and what kinds of things a property owner would need to bring forward in order to, to get the condition use permit. And I think it's, I think it's a great idea to expand, to expand the residential options downtown, especially in some of the older buildings that are in, in places where any kind of commercial activity is just not, historically hasn't done really well, kind of off the beaten path, even though they are in the commercial, through the central business district.
Yeah, so I'm trying to read that, thinking about one of those existing uses that was substantially damaged and is trying to be rebuilt, or one of them that is trying to sell and trying to get a mortgage, and that banker who wants some assurance that lending on this property is going to work. Because right now, they're out there in limbo, right, Mike?
Correct. Yeah, if they were to, to be torn down or burned down, they would have to have some type of commercial component--
To come back.
To come back, yeah.
So, so the ones that are on the periphery, quote-unquote "periphery," they are not going to, they don't have that concern about preservation of the primary retail frontage. I'm thinking of these three nice houses across the street from us. So they should be able to sail through a CUP on that alone, and then perhaps the Del Norte, perhaps CJ's, not very suitable for ground floor commercial, would be a criteria that would say, yeah, we can have this non-commercial piece in the block, because right now, that building just won't hold it. Eventually, we'll tear that building down and replace it if that's the demand, but it might be a while. So I'm agreeing. I think, Mike, that that second number nine is, is easier to imagine getting used equitably.
Without the primary.
Without using the word "primary," right. That's, because that's what, the Del Norte really had me concerned. New businesses open on one corner, two established businesses, they all come to the hearing and say, "That's primary across the street." No, we want more retail, commercial traffic, not less. And, and so I didn't want that oddity to happen there.
So you still think I should strike "primary" from here? Just say "preservation of retail frontages," or?
Ooh, I think we were talking about--
Oh, the--
The one above.
That's a good point.
Primary, commercial, and the one above. But, right, okay.
Well, it's primary, it's primary, so-- Right. Why distinguish?
Well, it's easier for me to deal with the primary retail frontage, rather than saying retail or primary commercial center. The center seems like a more comprehensive, we kind of know what a, a frontage is. Does the, does this owner feel that retail or commercial would be quite impossible in the case of this building?
Uh, that's what he's indicated, yeah.
It's got some thick walls, all right, but I just, where there's a will, there's a way, and, and certainly we want to encourage as much. I mean, you know, it, I'm sure there must be most, many cities that just say, in your CBD, it's residential is second floor and up, you can't have residential on first floor. There must be many towns like that.
In an odd sense, though, he has no first floor. Right. In a sense, he has no first floor.
No, it is an unusual, I've never looked at a section of the building, but it is strange. Or maybe it was wonderful for the use that it was built for, it just seemed, you always have to go up that.
It would, Kelly, he had Kelly and I look at it quite a few years ago with that mind about turning it into residential apartment, and it would be kind of cool that way. It could be. I mean, doesn't mean it would get done in a neat, neat way, but the potential was there for it to be really kind of spiffy.
Yeah.
So, Commissioners, what is your sense? Would you like to ask Mike to move this forward using the second number nine? And do you want to keep or remove the primary retail frontages from the second number nine, and just make it be retail frontages?
Reading the whole thing again, I, I think the word "primary" in that place doesn't, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. I don't think it adds, really adds anything, because you've got specific consideration given to preservation, preservation of retail frontages or ground floor, floor commercial. I think, I think that covers it. The word "primary" in there, if you, if you spent too much time on that, you could really get yourself wrapped up around your own axle, trying to figure out what they meant by "primary."
So you're just saying, strike "primary" in this case, too? And just say "preservation of retail frontages?"
Yeah.
I could live with that.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
So, that sounds like direction, Mike. So would that come back? It's too soon to bring it back as, because the next step would basically be bring it back for public hearing, right?
Yeah, I've, I think you're comfortable with going ahead and noticing it, so I do have it on next--
It's on for next, okay.
--public hearing if we wanted to move forward.
Okay, great. July eighth. All right, number eight. I'll preface this a little bit by saying, this has come to the commission quite a while ago from the Tree Commission and Bill Belknap. And it relates to the, kind of a two-pronged problem of, in residential subdivisions, we've required a fund be created by the developer, that fund is then used by the homeowner to get some money to plant a tree in the right, in the public right-of-way. And that mechanism hasn't always worked so well, and we have a lot of, the evidence is, we have money sitting in the fund unspent. And that's one prong of the problem, is getting the fund, which Tree Commission has worked on, getting the fund depleted, because the city can't just hold that money indefinitely. And then the other prong is coming up with a different mechanism that will hopefully get more trees in the ground and leave less dangling bits that we have now.
Okay. And I'm just going to go through what was brought to the Tree Commission when they had that discussion, I believe it was last year, towards the beginning of the year. So, you know, throughout town, there's this general desire, I think, that the public as a whole has a desire to grow the urban forest and increase tree planting throughout the city. Like Nels had mentioned, we have a street tree program that, you know, has a street tree fund, where every new subdivision that is created, the developer's required to, to put some money into this fund for planting of street trees for that subdivision. And so ever since nineteen ninety-nine was when we had passed this by resolution to require street trees be part of the development agreement within, within new subdivisions, the utilization has ranged from twenty-seven percent to a hundred percent, and it just really depended upon the subdivision and the developer and how well they kept track of, you know, the trees that were supposed to be planted. If it was one single developer, then the utilization rate was generally a lot higher because they knew of the program. When you have larger subdivisions, where you have multiple builders that come in and, build houses within the subdivision, the utilization rate gets a lot less. And, but the, the Parks Department, Parks and Rec Department still mail out every time a new home's built, an informational packet, and it has this information about the street tree program. And so even when you're not getting builders, sometimes you get homeowners that are able to utilize it, but, you know, in our experience, the utilization rate hasn't been that great. So the average is, is about fifty-seven percent. And the, really, the realization rate might be as low as forty-eight percent when you talk about the die-off or the mortality rate of street trees, which, you know, we're looking at probably about fifteen percent is the number from the, the Parks Department. And so, the, really, the question posed at the time, was the system in place today the best option for getting the street trees planted, which it appears that, you know, fifty-seven percent utilization rate is probably maybe not the, the best way to go about that, and maybe a, a change of course would be warranted, and that's why we're, you know, bringing this forward now. The current program was really focused on single-family residential lots in, in subdivisions. It's reviewed by the city, you know, this is part of the program to determine a number of trees required. You just have, it's not per lineal frontage, it's just per lot. And so every standard lot gets two, corner lots get two, because they have, you know, dual frontage, and cul-de-sac lots get one per lot, mainly just because you're looking at twenty, thirty-foot wide lots, and there's not room for multiple trees in front of a cul-de-sac. Developer pays a hundred dollars per tree into that street tree fund, and then there's vouchers that are issued. Homeowner can come, apply for the-- Homeowner can come, apply for the permit, get the voucher. I know that the Parks Department has been pretty flexible if they went to the nursery and purchased the tree. As long as it was a tree that was on the preferred plantings list, they could come in and get the voucher after the fact and get reimbursed for the money. And then, once they get the voucher, they can go take it to a nursery or retailer, and that allows up to $100 in value that then gets submitted to the city for reimbursement. Parks, our urban forester goes out and inspects tree installation and then reimburses the nursery and the retailer. So, looking at the subdivisions that were approved ever since 1999, you can see the utilization rate and the amount of money. I mean, you're looking at probably $45,000, $50,000 that's still... That's been accumulated in the street tree fund that's still sitting out there waiting to be utilized by subdivisions. And there is a clause within the resolution that states that after 10 years, you're able to be flexible and come in and use that street tree fund within other subdivisions so long as it's the subdivisions that are on the list here. So, going through the utilization, Christopher's Crossing was one of the highest ones, but you look at the other ones, they really range. Peterson First ended up really low, 27.6%. And in that area is located out there on Baker Street. So, you're building large amounts of apartment complexes. And so, you don't have the buy-in maybe from the homeowner. It's the builder at the time that's building the apartments. And, you know, they're not required to put the street trees in. They're only required to put the landscaping on the site, on their private property. And so, that's really the only thing they're concerned with, and that's probably why that utilization rate is so, so low on Peterson First Edition. North Park, you know, some of these, where it's the single developer, ends up with 100%, but most of them are pretty low. And then, you can see the amount of money that's still remaining in the fund. South Gate Second, $12,589. And then, they all add up. They're all in the multiple thousands of dollars. And you have ones that are currently hanging out there. South Gate Third, which they're just barely starting, I believe. The... They're just starting putting the infrastructure in right now, so... So, the question that's posed is, how do we get more trees planted? And it came up with two options. The first option was to require subdivision developers to plant trees. And so, this... The way that this would work was that they would be required some type of planting plan that needed to be submitted to the community development department and approved as far as the location, species, and plantings. Require planting of trees after public improvement construction. And so, this could become problematic when people come in and pour driveways. You know, sometimes the trees may need to be moved, and so, you'd have an issue there. And then, the developer must furnish security to ensure trees thrive during the first three years, fund replacement of tree mortality. So, some of the benefits are, you have the trees that are planted early, so they're able to get that growth. You know, sometimes with these subdivisions, until they reach full build-out, maybe five, 10 years down the road. So, if you have the trees planted right up front, they have a tendency to have that five, 10-year growth a lot sooner than they would be if you just planted them as you, you know, incrementally went along and built houses. You have a single party that's responsible for the maintenance and care for the first three years. You have a plan for the planting, and you don't need to chase future homeowners to plant trees. Some of the challenges, like I had mentioned before, you know, there is the damage during construction when they're building homes, and maybe the possible need to relocate due to driveway placement. You have maybe a little bit of opposition from the development community about just an additional requirement that's going to be imposed on them. And then, also how to work water, temporary public irrigation systems into this mix, run drip lines, things of that nature in order to get them established for the first three years. And then, you also have the possible lack of ownership of the tree. You know, you have more of a tendency, if a new homeowner purchases a property, gets a home built, to be able to pick out their tree and plant it themselves. They take ownership of that, and maybe they have a more... Greater tendency to care for a tree that's planted in front of their house. And then, there's a possible variant that was thrown in is to require the developer to install within two, three-time... Two, three-year time period, public improvement completion. It might reduce from construction for some lots. Might reduce damage from construction in some lots. So, that was just a variant. And then, option two was the... Determine to require the homeowner or contractor to plant trees prior to certificate of occupancy for individual homes. And the way that this would work would be that the developer... It's similar to what we're doing right now. The developer continues to pay street trees to the street tree fund. Contractor homeowner can use that voucher and be responsible for the street tree, but it would be dependent upon certificate of occupancy. And so, in order to complete the construction of the house, get all of the required building requirements done, one of the requirements would be that the street trees are planted before they're able to habitate the building, and we would issue a certificate of occupancy after they were planted. And then, the contractor homeowner, same as it currently exists, would be responsible for maintenance of the tree. Some of the benefits associated with that is that, you know, they're planted earlier after construction activity, and usually, you have all the driveways established right before certificate of occupancy, so it would reduce the potential for damage for the trees. It could be integrated in a construction permitting process, so it would just be... You know, usually, you get your checklist, and you have all your required inspections for a single-family home. Could just be included in that process and let people know in the beginning that that would be a requirement, so they wouldn't be surprised at the end when they don't get their certificate of occupancy for the street trees. We're usually really flexible with plantings, so they could get a temporary certificate of occupancy. Maybe it's in the middle of winter, and it's not a good time to plant a street tree. And so, we do have that flexibility to give them a temporary certificate for a month or two before they get it planted. So, there is some flexibility there. They also have, you know, water connections. All the utility lines should be run to the home at that point. Maybe they have a sprinkler system or drip lines, and so, that would be an advantage. The homeowner's there and available to care for the trees, and there's no need to chase future homeowners to plant the trees because they would be, you know, tied to the certificate of occupancy. A couple of the challenges would maybe be just the same as option number one. Opposition from the contractor community is just another requirement in the process. And then, maybe a lack of ownership of tree by homeowner for spec homes. So, this could be the builder chooses to build one or two spec homes and then for sale in the future. And then, you maybe have a lack of ownership just because it's the builder that's building the spec homes. Then, you have some just broader questions. I mean, with the current program, just really targets single-family development. Maybe larger-scale commercial, multifamily residential development should be included within the street tree requirements? And how would that be treated? Would it be per lot basis? Would it be per lineal feet of frontage on a street for commercial and multifamily lots? Should street trees be required within redevelopment? So, somebody redevelops a site, tears down the house, should, you know, your street trees be required at that time? Usually, it's not going to be a whole subdivision, but it may be an individual lot. So, we asked those broader questions. And then, like Nils had mentioned, the Tree Commission reviewed this last year, and they really went with option number two as probably the best option to require it as... At the certificate of occupancy stage. And they were willing to take control of expanding the accumulated funds, this $45,000 to $50,000, and figuring out a way to go back. And maybe it's hiring a couple interns, you know, temps for the Parks and Rec Department to go around and plant all these trees or send out, you know, maybe additional information to all the homeowners and subdivisions where you had low utilization to let them know the voucher program's available. You know, see how many trees get planted, and then, after that, maybe, you know, do the temp position and go out there and see if we can get the other ones planted. But, Tree Commission volunteered to undertake that activity and get that... Figure out the best way to get that taken care of. And then, the city attorney did review, because there was a question about the legality with requiring street trees and tying those in with certificate of occupancies. So, we had him take a look at that, and he ended up concluding that we can require that under the Local Land Use Planning Act. Can't specifically be for aesthetics, but we can point to all those things that trees do. Urban heat island effect, stormwater filtration, the cooling effects of the tree canopy, clean air, et cetera. So, you know, we can point to those benefits of trees within the city in order to require street tree planting like most communities do. And he does recommend replacing what we currently have with a resolution which is on our city website, but it really isn't published anywhere. It's just a... You know, all the resolutions aren't really city code. They're a separate document, not part of the code. And so, he recommends replacing the current resolution with an ordinance. And he would recommend amending the subdivision ordinance to have it in one... You know, you're already going to the subdivision ordinance to get most of the requirements for subdivisions anyway, so it would make sense to amend that document and include street tree planning requirements within the subdivision ordinance. And so, that was his recommendation there. And so, with that, after we've gone through the whole street tree program, I think that that's our next direction. If the commission feels like this is worthy of attention is to go back through and probably amend the subdivision ordinance and bring a draft ordinance to you for review.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion?
How do existing, older subdivisions, not on that list, where the developer did not put money into the fund, how is... How are they affected?
Well...
Or are they?
They wouldn't be affected the way it currently is right now. You know, that would be... I guess the question is whether or not... You really can't retroactively go back and require somebody to contribute money. They have the development agreement for the subdivision, and so... I don't... Unless they were to redevelop, you know, that was one of the questions. If they were to scrap the whole subdivision, or maybe they're all teardowns and they end up... Maybe it's the block on, you know, Washington Street where there's three or four residential houses that are teardowns. That was in a subdivision from the early 1900s. Maybe they end up... You know, that would just be a question for the commission is whether or not for redevelopment of subdivisions where it's a complete wipeout of the... All the structures, and it's really a new subdivision, but maybe using the existing lots. How do we handle that? Do we require some type of street tree dedication as part of that requirement? Somebody comes in with an individual lot and wants to build on just a vacant lot that was in a subdivision that wasn't part of the street tree program? Are we going to require street trees be planted as part of the certificate of occupancy just because it's a vacant lot? And so, you know, those are some of the questions that I think we need to work through.
You didn't show a drawing here at all, but... Just for our general benefit, remind us of how wide the meridian strip is that where the trees are planted.
Generally, five to six feet, I believe is what our current street standard is.
Sometimes, yeah, I was just... I like... If, you know, six is probably better. It's just, in terms of making trees really grow, I've wondered, do you think Parks and Rec, they're dying off 15% even in residential areas, you think? Or do you think... I mean, downtown, I understand it because it's hard to get trees really living well in a place where the rain doesn't really help them much. The one little piece of ground that they've got is covered by the leaves. And so, I understand that urban trees, downtown trees, don't do well, but...
I think that's pretty common. The guys that work in our office live in newer subdivisions, Shelby Lane, Castleford area. And I know that they've had issues with getting Tom Grund, an urban forester, out there to take a look at them and replace some of the trees in front of their houses.
So, they are having some problems.
So, yeah.
And that may have to do with the fact that we plant little scrawny trees. I know 100 isn't enough. I was just looking at trees today and reminding myself that 100 doesn't get you much of a tree. I know when I planted the maples on our... I went for the $250 variety, but it's sure... They don't... You can't kick them and hurt them by the time they're that size, you know, if they get to be a certain size. So, we don't talk about caliper, do we, really?
We don't, no. I mean, in the... Or the specifications, I think we have just a typical caliper, you know, diameter. We have those requirements on private property, but I don't know that we have those in requirements on the street trees. Within certain buffers on private property, they're required to be a certain caliper, certain height upon planting, but street trees in the right-of-way, I believe it's just the right species, and there's not any particular caliper or height that's required upon planting.
I'm really proud of the fact that we've been given... You know, we're called a street tree town or something. We get a little award on that. I think it's... I suppose the Tree Commission is working... I mean, the other part of this job beside the ordinance and the requirement is to make people feel like what we want. This town is... Wants to breathe and have good air and be a tree town. And so, that's... That publicity, if... It's hard to get it out, but I think it's... That's the other side of the coin.
Yeah. In that regard, the 2014 citizen survey showed both a... That the citizens appreciated the trees that were here, and they wanted an expansion of the urban forest, yeah.
Yeah. I just think it's so... I don't know, makes me feel so good, but I don't know how you share that with folks to...
So, um... I guess it's the... Must be the previous slide, Mike. You had a couple of questions for us to ponder. Right there. The current program is really targeted at the single-family residential development. So, should we think about a program that is... Got a broader scope than that? Obviously, the Peterson's Edition, Peterson's First, Baker Street, a bunch of apartments went in there, and we didn't get trees. It's pretty barren-looking out there. So, that would be one of those thoughts about adding that. And then, the requirement... And I think that's going to get more complicated in redevelopment. There may be no tree lawn because of the way that street got built.
Yeah.
There may be no right-of-way that runs very deep into the yard beyond the sidewalk, so it may... It may require interpretation in order to be possible. But I think the first question would be for us, do we want to think about doing it in redevelopment contexts? And I'm thinking of EMSI, which I know that unfolded differently. But, those trees along Jackson needed to be removed because of the sidewalk and all those issues. And then, we got a nice row of trees back. Would have been ashamed to have lost that row of trees, even though we got a better sidewalk. So, it's good. So, how do... How do we want to think about that?
Well, I don't know how common it is, but I know in front of our house, there... We don't have anything in the tree lawn because it's got utilities in it, and it's got wires overhead. So, we're in an older subdivision. If our house burned down or was torn down and somebody... If our house burned down or was torn down and somebody rebuilt, you couldn't put anything in there.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, there's, there are a lot of oddball mixtures that could, could come up. And we live in a subdivision, or an old subdivision that the nice trees were put under the power lines and they're abortions. They are absolutely hideous. They're not healthy. They don't look good. And they're whose responsibility then when they die to the point where they can't be It's a messy, and I'm a tree fanatic, so-
So, the Tree Commission has got its current street tree planting guide booklet. And the notion when David Rock, who chairs Tree, and I went to see the city's attorney was, could an ordinance be crafted that pointed to that document as the acceptable trees? And then, over time, the Tree Commission would revise the document so that it got smarter about when planting under power lines. We've talked about when planting in a narrow tree lawn versus a wide tree lawn because some trees are much more prone to breaking the sidewalk. So, that, that the mechanism would be that the ordinance would get created and then Tree Commission would work on making the tree planting guide smarter over time. And I think the other would be, if we were to go with the redevelopment notion, there would have to be a way of having the city forester to have some latitude for exactly what you're saying.
If there are utilities in-
Right. If there's utilities underground, it's going to be kind of crazy to be digging a big hole.
Right.
And what would be the trade-off or how to work around that or something?
Well, it seems like a good part of this is to have the Tree Commission now be in charge of the budget or the money, the financial aspect of it. That will, the folks that are involved in that will come up with some, you know, ideas to address some of the things that we're talking about right now.
Mike, is the desire to maybe have that, that fund be used up and not, not rely on such a thing anymore that it's just, it's just required and there's no fund set up the way it had been?
Well, I think the fund will remain the same. It'll just be that the ordinance or the new amendment will ensure that the funds get expended instead of just sitting in the account.
Okay.
And then, the Tree Commission will be working to expend the thousands of dollars that they've accumulated in the street tree fund. And so, as soon, you know, I guess our goal would be that you'd have the street tree fund because that has to be through the development agreement when a subdivision is platted. The developer has to contribute that, you know, a hundred dollars per tree within the fund. And then, each house that subsequently built within the subdivision, they'll need to pull from that street tree fund in order to get their trees. But, the certificate of occupancy, the tie to that would be that it, you know, it's going to ensure that the, the trees are, or the money's going to be expended for the trees.
But, the fund would still be there to be sure that the money was available-
Correct.
At the point, time it was needed.
Yeah, yeah. It'd be like a security type thing.
Okay.
I have a different question. One thing I've never talked about or thought about is, does the city see itself as having a different responsibility when a street is considered a arterial or a major collector versus just any side street? Because, you know, when you see interesting and what I think is beautiful developments done by developers who, you know, who, well, I'm even thinking about some things we've done on campus where you, you know, you plant a hundred trees and they're big caliper and they, they just present a different issue. I can't think of how many trees we've planted on campus in the last thirty years, but it's thousands. And there are some rows of trees and streets. I mean, we've changed line street from being this sort of blank thing up a hill to being the tree-lined street, and it just looks different. And one wonders if the city shouldn't, we shouldn't think about the city taking a slightly different responsibility for, let's just say, Mountain View. Big crappy busy street. Well, let's make it more wonderful because we, I know we've often dreamed about making Highway Eight or the, the big highway wonderful with trees. But, of course, the district doesn't want to play that game. And so, the district always just winks and says, well, you don't get to have trees. But, we have other streets in town that were specifically, that aren't highways, you know, and Mountain View certainly comes up. Or whether it be even, even D and Third and Sixth are, I just wonder if that discussion's ever happened. Do we, you see what I'm saying? Once the city decides this is a big artery that we're going to let cars run amok on, well, do we have a different responsibility there than on a lovely little B Street where there, you know, where it's, there's only an occasional car? Is that, I don't think I've ever heard a discussion about, in that way.
Yeah. I don't know that they've ever treated street trees differently, you know, depending upon the classification of road. You know, we have the street trees, or the, the road stand, construction standards that obviously have wider streets for collectors' arterials, have wider tree lawns, you know, things of that nature. But, it's just your standard street tree that's shown on the cross-section of all those diagrams. So, and I am unaware of that conversation about, you know, maybe more trees or different types of trees. It's usually whether or not we have a bike lane or how wide's the bike lane, you know?
Sure. Well, I'm just, I've all of a sudden have a brilliant idea that I think that we should talk about because what we need is an example of this is a way, when people care and there's issues to deal with, this is the way it would look and be able to say, aha, we did that here. But where would we do that? Well, we can't do that on every street in town. I mean, it's just not going to make sense to be able to, to do that. But, and I don't know if it relates to this, but as larger-scale commercial and multifamily, in other words, once we struggled with, we struggled with A Street, we still want to make A Street a bigger, fancier through-street, that's been beat back a little bit. But, then we feel sorry for ourselves because people who live in apartments aren't going to do it. But, you know, how do you make, how do you make A Street a more interesting and livable place?
Yeah. I think maybe the only example would be like the reconstruction of College Street when we did that. I mean, that was pretty specific to the urban, you know, legacy crossing area as well as EMSI. It was the same tree, artistic tree grates, you know, number of trees, brick pavers, just kind of the, you know, paying extra close attention just because it is in an urban area.
Well, I don't want to, and I'm just now having a second thought. I don't want to walk away from the fact that the city has set a high standard with their, with downtown. I mean, so I don't want to be throwing any rocks at us. I mean, our main street is, we've chosen to try and make Main Street a different kind of a place. And, and I believe it has been too. I think it's, to a large degree, pretty successful. I haven't gone over and just held the trees in front of your place, Greg, but I don't know how, what caliper they are, whether it's, but I think they're a little larger.
Yeah. They, they were pretty tall when they went in and they're filling out nicely.
Yeah. And I think that's, so I guess what I'm getting at, I'm just trying to play the devil's advocate about how we set an example for what people might want to do and being aware of how worried people are about-
So-
Having the government tell them what to do.
Right. So, and I think that some of the challenges, you named A Street and you named Mountain View, but they're pretty well completely developed. So, getting those trees now becomes a different challenge than in a-
True, than in a brand-new.
In an undeveloped spot.
Absolutely. But downtown, you know, in nineteen eighty, there was no tree on downtown.
Right.
And it was perfectly well-developed and we decided there would be a way to do that. And, and-
As a community, we decided to pay for it.
As a community, right.
Right.
But we, yeah, we have been installing street trees as we've been redoing Mountain View. You know, right now, when they're talking about the roundabout project at Sixth and Mountain View, as part of that project, all the way down to Joseph would be installation of sidewalks and tree lawns and, and street trees the whole way, so.
The city has to incrementally do it as it's doing other projects-
Yeah, yeah.
Around established, right, okay.
How does, is there anything that accompanies that that deals with irrigation so that the money's not spent on a tree and then it's never watered and?
Well-
Because that does happen a lot, you know?
It is.
Something gets put in and it looks nice for just a little while, but then there's no care for it and-
Yeah. It, it built in with our city code, it's the responsibility of the adjacent property owner in order to maintain the tree lawn and the trees and any shrubs or any vegetation that's in the tree lawn.
And what happens if they don't?
Urban forester would go out there and, and we have a, you know, urban forestry ordinance that requires that. And so, he'd go out there and work with them to get it maybe replaced. Or, if he doesn't want it replaced, then he'd, you know, allow it to just be removed. But, he would be the one responsible for that. Any type of tree that's removed in the right of way, he has to sign off on it. And, you know, maybe it's diseased and they, they need to remove it. Well, he usually requires replacement, so they'd have to plant a new tree. But, if it's in, you know, some type of like utility line issue or driveway issue or the sidewalk, you know, sidewalk issue, then he has some discretion, but it's, it's pretty much up to him. But, I've seen in most cases that he'll require replacement of the tree or won't allow its removal.
It's, it looks like that from the presentation you've given, Mike, and from the discussion, this is, this is a many-faceted issue. I would suggest as a first step that we address the immediate, immediate issue of the money sitting in the funds by looking at those options. I think option two makes a lot of sense because you've got a point in time where there's a transition, not necessarily transition of ownership, but construction's done, somebody's ready to move in, landscaping is probably the last thing that goes in anyway. It seems that that's a good point in time to, to make that change where you're putting the tree in there. And then, take some of these steps to spend the money that's being built up and then maybe keep the discussion going on some of these other aspects of it beyond just the, you know, that money sitting in the account. Because it does sound like there's a lot of things that have been brought up about trees and urban forestry and what, what should be done about that that could, could take up a lot of, a lot of bandwidth other than just the one, the money issue.
I think, Greg, you're right to identify the option two kind of seamlessly overlays or replaces our current practice. That is, there are subdivisions out there that have put money into a tree fund that would simply have a different timing of getting the tree in the ground and the money would come out of the fund. There are the now-built-out subdivisions that have money in the fund unspent. And the Tree Commission is going to figure out how to work with those individual landowners or the ordinance has some other escape valve. Can they actually craft a plan through the escape valve, which was to use in ways that were in support of the subdivision? What's that, right? But, so the Tree Commission is saying, the money that is kind of in limbo will help that go away in an orderly way. And what you're saying is the money that's not yet in limbo, but it is in the fund, option two would ensure that it got cleaned up in an orderly way.
Yeah. It seems like that would, would, nothing's going to solve everything perfectly when you have, when you have options and discretion in there. But that at least puts a clear point in time when, when that could get spent rather than just when somebody gets around to it.
While you're on the roll, do you have any feelings about extending the requirement to large-scale commercial, multifamily, residential, or redevelopment situations?
Sitting here, off the top of my head, I don't. I, I, this is news to me, a lot of this, the tree stuffs. But I, I think there is a lot, a lot to consider there. And I think it's something that to keep on the, on the agenda.
Maybe some material for shared reading.
Yeah. Urban forestry kind of stuff. It's an interesting issue and I, as I say, until tonight, I'd never given it any thought. I just thought trees magically appeared.
Root goes down. Okay. Other, other thoughts? What's, what David and I planned out was that following this discussion, Tree Commission would listen in, weigh in a little bit, give some input back, trying to divide the job just because there seemed to be two big projects, but trying to also keep a certain amount of, so they will meet the Tuesday, the seventh, just prior to our meeting. So, I think it's probably optimistic on your proposed future agenda, Mike, that we'd get much back from them the next morning.
Okay.
But anyway, to try to keep the dialogue going. And maybe, maybe we would like to hear Tree Commission weigh in on those two bullets. Okay? And the shared reading, the role of urban trees could be an interesting, I imagine David could help us find something there. Okay. So, I will facilitate this conversation going to Tree Commission next. And that brings us to number nine. Is there anything else that folks have that we ought to think about before we adjourn? Right, we are adjourned.